I'd like to call this meeting to order. Get a motion that the closed meeting be closed and the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion concerning the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Honeycutt. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Sack for Mr. Palmer. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. At this time, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're going to start with our recognitions, Mr. Nichols. Floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sturdivan, members of the board. As of today, in fact, at the V S B A meeting, our board was honored with a special recognition by the First Lady of Virginia. I believe we have on the board a picture of Ms. Garner receiving from the First Lady the 2006 Award Food for Thought Award for Meal Access to Fight Hunger category below 10,000 students. And we're very proud of the system. I do need to recognize that our former food services director was very proactive in going after many opportunities for breakfast, lunch, and dinner and moving them, and we will miss her. But at this time, I'd also like to point out that we have a new food services director who has come in and already started doing a good job. And so, I'd like to recognize as we're having this nice award, Ms. Robin Moore. Robin, if you will stand up. Who has joined us. And we are sure that we will be having more of these awards coming our way with Ms. Moore at the helm. No pressure. No pressure. I'd also like for the benefit of the board members who may not have met her before, Ms. Mary Hodges, who is our new special ed director, if she would stand up and greet everybody. Ms. Hodges has been with us for a while, training in position and working with our special ed, so we're very glad to have her on board. So, that's our recognitions for the evening.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Now, moving on, we have a couple of items to bring to the attention of the board. There have been some calendar of adjustments that we have. Ms. Height, I believe, has been working and preparing some of that information. Is that?
That's fine.
Go ahead.
I don't have it with me. I wasn't aware, but, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, school board members, on the approved calendar that was voted on several months ago, there was one date, and it was in April, and I believe it was April the 15th, that was set as a high school parent-teacher conference, and that's when interim reports would go home. We're asking if we could just move that up one week, and I think that would be April the 8th.
February.
February, excuse me. February. And that way, it would even out the number of days in the interim sessions, just to make it fairer. And just unfortunately, when the calendar was worked on, that was not considered, and we would just like to do the fair thing by our students and the appropriate thing for grading purposes, if we could just ask to move it up just one week.
Okay.
And that would be my recommendation, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's an item that's on our action later on. Also, Ms. Rogers has got some information for the Title III application that she wants to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, board members. You'll probably remember, in June, we came to you with the intent to apply for the Title III application, and just a few weeks later than that, they sent out the actual application. So tonight, we do have for you to review and hopefully to approve tonight, because it is due by August 1st to DOE, the Title III application. We do not get a lot of money in this federal program. We only get about $5,438, and this money is spent in total for tutoring services for our ESL students, as identified by the data. And this is after-school hour tutoring and summer tutoring for them, above and beyond what we already provide. So that's what we use this money for, moving forward, if you approve this application tonight. Are there any questions?
None. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is information. We have a letter requesting, again, next year, that our food services program provide the services to Rivermont School, which we take advantage of and is in Chase City. We have the most, the local, the opportunity that it is in our back door in Chase City. And we have done that in the past. I don't think this requires any type of action on your part, but we want to bring to your attention that they are requesting that this will be happening again, or is being, yes, it does require attention. We'll vote later on. And I don't know if there are any questions that anybody has related to this, but we have a new food services director, so I don't know that I can suggest, if you have questions about that, you ask her. I think we just depend on the fact that we are, have done it in the past, and they're asking that we do it again, and I don't know of any reason that we should change at this point.
It's not as simply providing lunches for them.
Right. Item D on the agenda is the item that was brought up at our June meeting about the possibility for fairness to the schools of moving the Air Force ROTC program from Parkview to Bluestone. I think this is a situation that we certainly need to be continuing to look at, but at this point in the school year, we have already set much of our schedule for the following year, and this could cause some significant disruption. We have looked into it, and right now, the actual contract that we have dates back to 1994, I believe. And so, we need to go back and really look at the whole contract to make sure that it's a contract with the school division, as opposed to being a contract with specific schools. But being that we are starting school again, August the 15th, for students, you will see in my recommendation for moving forward that we wait on the matter for next year and then take another look at it for another year, from the perspective of making it a fair option for both sides of the count. But if there are questions that the board has about that, I'd like for them to have a chance.
Board members, any questions? None. Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Okay. Moving on, we have also from our last meeting, the concept about the student liaison program. The reason that there was a question is because of budget shortfalls that we have. Primarily, this is a program that, the goal of it was particularly for the liaisons to bring information to the board from the schools, from the students that they would engage and work with from elementary, middle, and high school, and be able to make a report, as we do from the various programs. And I certainly support the idea, but with budget restrictions that we have, and I would also say because of the fact that we have so many students in programs like FBLA and DI and robotics and whatnot with shortfall, I feel like staff, including myself, can get into the schools and be able to really look at, for this coming year at least, be able to engage the students and have information, and this might be something that would help us with some funding issues that we have with the cost of it on a monthly basis, for us and for the students. So, I believe we'll have some, someone addressing it tonight in our public hearing, and certainly sympathies, but my recommendation that you will be voting on is that we change policy so that we not have that for next year, moving forward for next year. Surplus items is another issue that comes up. This is something that comes under maintenance, so I'm going to ask if we can get a report on surplus items from our Director of Maintenance.
Evening, Mr. Nichols, Chairman, board members. We have added some additional items, uploaded to your board docs this month for maintenance and technology, and we would just like to recommend at this time that the board deem these items surplus, and we're also asking for a vote on those tonight.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Mr. Nichols?
Okay.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Are we still doing F, the student transfer, item F?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did skip over that one. Yes, that's to give, bring you back up to date from last month's report. We look back into the issue of overcrowdedness at South Hill Elementary School and the possibility of redirecting some of the students that are on buses that we thought were in the District of La Crosse Elementary School. And what we determined was actually that South Hill Elementary School is not as crowded as we had at one time thought. Our class sizes are projected for next year to be in good shape. If we move some, we may find ourselves in a couple of classrooms at La Crosse Elementary School overcrowded, and so, having looked into it more, I'm not bringing a recommendation to you that we move any students from one school to the other. So that's just to follow up on that situation. Thank you for keeping me from overlooking that. And as far as superintendent's comments are concerned, just want to bring to the attention of the board just a reminder that on Thursday night, the 21st, we have a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors on the final report from the architects firm on the capital improvement program for the middle and high schools. Hoping that all of the board members will be able to come to that meeting. You have set a board meeting to respond to that for next week on the 26th of July, and so we will be looking forward to having that meeting. It's been advertised. Also, like to bring to the attention of the board that we have, believe it or not, almost come to the end of the summer, as far as school schedule is concerned. New teachers will be coming back on the 3rd. We're very pleased the Business Education Partnership is going to once again be working with businesses in the community to have a new teacher dinner at Brian's Steakhouse on the 3rd, and helping build some support in our system for our new teachers. And then, actually, the returning teachers will come back, I believe, on the 8th, and then on the 15th, students will return. So, we have very little time before we'll be back in full session for a new school year, and I'm looking forward to it. One of the items that is coming to a lot of people's attention statewide is the fact that the, we have a lot more, today, when we were having a meeting with the School Boards Association, the governor actually was mentioning the need for bold action in transferring schools, and many of the components that we've been looking at at high school redesign certainly fit that issue. House Bill 895, I believe it was, is, I realized I had been suggesting that the next year's 6th grade students would be looking at graduation requirements that would be different than this year's, and the regular and standard diploma and the advanced studies diploma, they're looking at this year's 7th grade students. So it's a year sooner that we will be looking at some expectations for some specific career planning. And I'm very pleased that we are ahead of the game statewide, as I was meeting with a program with the School Board Association, a special committee looking at the whole high school redesign and recommendations, where career literacy was pointed out as a primary focus that we've got to move on, and we are having our counselors this summer actually working on certification as career literacy specialists. So we have a plan that's coming forth and will be brought to you soon in the new year. So we're moving forward on that and feel like we are doing very well as far as the state's changes. But new schools, the new school year will be starting very soon. And that's it for my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. We're going to continue on. I'm going to pass the chairman's remark, and we're going to get into the committee reports. A, Joint Education Capital Improvement Committee.
Once again, we have an update this month from our Director of Maintenance on where we are on our.
Good evening, once again. I'd just like at this time to just touch base on you as far as where we're at with our capital improvement project lists. We've been working very diligently throughout the past months to get a lot of these projects, or all of these projects accomplished throughout the summer months. We're very limited time. Right now, I'm pleased to report that the drainage issues for the gymnasiums at Chase City Elementary, Clarksville Elementary have been completed, and work will start at La Crosse as soon as the end of this week, weather permitting. We all know what a challenge the rain and the storms have been to us from all ways at once. After La Crosse is finished, they'll be moving on to Bluestone High School, in all hopes to get the football field drainage taken care of before the first home game sometime in August, I believe. Parkview Middle School gutters are scheduled to go on first week in August. Clarksville, Chase City, and La Crosse gym floors, those will be pushed into the fall, because by the time we got approval to do such with those, the guy that's going to do the floors for us, just his schedule had gotten full for the next two months. I've already spoken with the principals at each of these schools. They said it would not be a problem to move classes out of the gym for those weeks within September and October, and to allow us to get in there to accomplish redoing the gymnasium floors. We have completed the floor at Chase City Elementary School office. It looks very good. We did get our tractor in, and we've used it several times. That's come in mighty handy. The awnings at La Crosse and Clarksville Elementary School, they will be up before the students arrive, as far as August 15th. We began working on exterior lighting. We've gotten most of the pole lights, parking lot lights at the schools working that are able to get working at this time. Aside from capital improvement projects, the maintenance department, with the donated ceiling tile, has also replaced all the ceiling tile in the old section of Clarksville Elementary School. We took all the old ceiling tile out, painted the grid, started it back up, and put new ceiling tile in with matching light bulbs. It looks really good. With that being said, I'd like to take this time also to really give credit to our new custodians. I was almost in a panic with the timeframe we had to get these schools cleaned, and these guys have really stepped up, more so than I ever thought they would. And we're actually ahead of schedule. The schools look, I've heard many people make comments, the schools look better now than they've seen them look in several years. With this, with the new improvements, as far as the new ceiling tile and our crews waxing the floor, I'm real excited to see what the school's going to look like when they open up in August.
Mr. Dalton, can you share with the board where the ceiling tiles came from?
Microsoft actually donated these ceiling tiles to us. They had, they had ordered too many and told us we could have them before we came to get them, and so we did so, and it's really helped us a lot. We wouldn't be able to, due to budgetary constraints, we would not have been able to do this work if they hadn't donated. So, I'd like to take this time also to really thank Microsoft again for their generous donation.
Thank you. Also, board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Dalton? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, Finance Committee.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met last Thursday to review the bills, and we had those questions answered, and we are recommending that the bills be paid as they were presented. We also reviewed the Title III application that Ms. Rogers referred to earlier, and we're also recommending that the board approve that application as well.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Any questions? Moving on to item C, Gifted and Talented Special Ed, Health, and Family Committee.
I met with the Governor's School Committee Thursday, and they reorganized, they presented the schedule for the kids for the coming school year, and made the announcement that they're going to try to be better at communicating with the parents, to let them know what was going on. So they're working on that. But we nominate, well, we elected a new chairman and vice chairman, and the director and assistant director were reappointed.
Who's the director now?
Michelson, Ms. Michelson.
Thank you, Ms. Garner. Any questions? Moving on to item D, CTE Career and Technical Education Committee Report.
Members of the board, I'd like to ask our CTE Coordinator to give a brief report on our cyber camp.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, and board members. I'm just going to give you a quick report about our cyber camp. Our students will be here hopefully next month to do a more in-depth presentation about what they experienced at cyber camp. But we had our culmination event on the 13th, and we had 21 students who completed cyber camp. And we actually surveyed those students, and seven of them are current, will be rising seniors, 14 of them will be rising 10th and 11th graders, and all 14 that will be eligible next year said they would love to have a part two of the cyber camps. We think it was very successful. We actually had Ms. Thayer, who works for the State of Virginia, that came and actually visited with our cyber camp and talked to Mr. Nichols and myself, and also the teachers and the students about their experiences with cyber camp. And we've expressed interest in seeing if they can assist us with getting another grant next year, and we're also, I'm working with Dr. Patton at Southside to see if it's possible if they can assist us with grant funding as well. But again, we had 21 students. We had 10 days. It was very exciting. We did some tours of Microsoft and the Higher Ed Center, and also, we went to the Spy Museum in DC, which was an excellent experience. And they also had a lot of learning projects. And I think one of the most amazing things, well, the first day, you had the Bluestone kids and the Parkview kids, and they were separate. Within the first hour, they were together, and that from that day forward, they stayed together on. And it was even very, you know, rewarding to see there was one student who sat by himself the first two days, and by the third day, five or six of them, three from Parkview, two from Bluestone, it went over there and sat with him. But they had a wonderful experience. It was a great experience for all the students, and again, we'll do a presentation at next month's board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for? If not, we're going to move on to item E, Athletics Discipline Committee.
Mr. Chairman, you.
Okay. With the Athletics and Discipline Committee, there is nothing to report. Moving to item nine, Public Input. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have two people. At this times, at this time, matters may be publicly brought to the attention of the board and administration. Public comments at the board meetings are just one of the many avenues for communication, and the board recognizes and appreciates the importance of input from and communication with the public we represent. The public is invited to sign up to speak. The clerk of the school board will write down your name, contact information, and the topic that you wish to speak about. The public is allowed up to six minutes at most meetings to express their views. Please respect that time limitation. It will be enforced. Please understand that it may not be possible to immediately respond to the questions. As a reminder, it is inappropriate at a public meeting to make personal attacks, to be defamatory, or to disparage individuals or identifiable groups. Again, we welcome and appreciate your input. Prior to beginning your comment, please state your name to the board. Cameron Hawkins.
Good evening, Chairman, Superintendent, board members. My name is Cameron Hawkins, and I'm here to speak on the topic of the student liaisons. My senior year of high school, I was the student liaison for Parkview High School. That was in 2014, and I served with Devon Moody, who was for Bluestone High School. And Devon and I learned many lessons and built a friendship that will last forever. We both grew as young adults and made connections that could potentially benefit our future. This was a year of many firsts for me, and without the experience of serving as student representative, I do not think I would be where I am today. I know that sounds very cliche, but I stepped out of my comfort zone, I made connections with people, and I think that it was one of the best things I could have done my senior year. After my first year of college, I changed my major from nursing to elementary education. There were many factors that played into this decision, but my experience on the school board opened my eyes to the wonderful opportunities in education. I'm honestly so excited for a career in this future, and this is why we need to keep options such as the student liaisons in place for students to participate in, and give them opportunities that will help them grow and learn valuable life lessons. With the help from you all and the opportunities I was given during my term as student liaison, and through Parkview High School and Mecklenburg County Public Schools, I will be graduating in one year from Lynchburg College with my bachelor's degree in elementary education. And from there, I will have the chance to change my students' lives every day. Since I will be graduating a year early, I hope to continue my education and get my masters in educational leadership. As the school board, I ask that you all please keep this in mind, and just remember the opportunities that this can give our students. Thank you all for your time, and I appreciate all you do for our school systems. And I want to thank you, Mr. Sturdivan. You played a big part in my term as student liaison, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, and members of the school board. My name is Olivia Tanner, and I am currently the student liaison representing Parkview High School for the 2016-2017 school year. It came to my attention through watching the online school board meetings that the necessity of this position has come into question. I am here to tell you that there should be no question about the importance of a position that directly connects the school board with the issues that are being faced by the children that they serve. Last fall, I attended the V S B A conference and took part in a session that brought together student liaisons around the state and taught them the importance of their position and what their job is as a representative. I realized after this trip that being student liaison is so much more than just simply holding a position. I spoke with a fellow liaison, and he mentioned that he had attended the previous year, and that there were even more people present than there had been in the past. That in itself shows that school systems all over the state are realizing the significance of having a voice for students on their school board. It was stated by Mr. Nichols that the position of student liaisons could possibly be a distraction to the business aspects of the school board meetings. If the wish of the school board is to have a strictly business meeting, then it is only logical to rid every meeting of senior of the month recognitions, special awards, and any other achievements made by staff or students, and have them moved to a separate occasion. If that is not the case, and the idea that student liaisons alone could cause a distraction to the board proves that there is, there is an agenda against this specific position. If Mecklenburg County were to make the decision to get rid of the position of student liaisons, they would not only break the connection between themselves and the students of this county, but also take a counterproductive leap backwards by insinuating that they are not devoted to hearing and taking care of issues that are being faced by their students every day. Thank you for listening, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other people signed up for public input?
That'll be all.
At this point, we're going to move into the action phase. Item A, that the school board approves the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on June 20 of 2016. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion for Mr. Honeycutt, second for Mr. Edwards. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Epstein.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Item B, get a motion that the school board approves the minutes of the special school board meeting held on June 27, 2016. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for Mr. Edwards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Johnson. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Epstein.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Item C, that the school board approves the payment of the bills. We have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee does make the recommendation that we pay the bills as they were presented.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. We have a recommendation. Second. We have a recommendation, and a second. Mr. Honeycutt, second. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Item D, item D is two-part, that the school board approves the personnel recommendations from the superintendent. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the personnel.
We have a motion for Ms. Garner. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a sack for Mr. Edwards. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Mrs. Bailey?
This is the two-part.
This is the first, the bulk.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Also on the personnel, that the School Board approves the recommendation, that the School Board approves the personnel recommendations, item B.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for Mr. Edwards. Do we have a second? Sack for Ms. Garner. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Item E, that the School Board approves a VPSA reimbursement resolution. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for Ms. Garner and a sack for Mr. Edwards. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
The School Board Association reimbursement.
Okay, my E is different. Okay, I'm sorry. Mine's under F. I just wanted to make sure clarification that we were on the right one, so yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Item F, that the School Board approves the middle and high school fee schedule. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Palmer and a sack for Mr. Edwards. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Item G, that the School Board approves the changes to the 2016-17 calendar. Do we have a motion? We have a motion for Ms. Garner. Do we have a second? Sack for Mr. Palmer. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Item H, that the School Board approves a Superintendent's recommendation regarding student matter 2016-2017, item one. Mr. Nichols, your recommendation.
My recommendation is that the Board approve that we allow the student to move forward as recommended here.
Thank you. We have a recommendation from the Superintendent. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make that motion.
We have a motion for Ms. Bailey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Garner. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Mr. Ritchie, do you have a discussion? Mr. Honeycutt, do you have a discussion?
No, I just, I was not sure what we were doing.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Item I, that the School Board approves the Title III application. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee does make the recommendation that we approve that Title III application.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. We have a recommendation for Ms. Bailey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Sack for Mr. Honeycutt. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Item J, that the School Board approves a Rivermont School Lunch Agreement. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Edwards. Do we have a second? Sack for Mr. Palmer. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Item K, that the School Board approves the 2016-2017 Code of Conduct. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion for Ms. Garner. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second for Ms. Bailey. Roll call.
Could I have?
Actually, we have discussion. Ms. Bailey?
I did have a chance to call Ms. Height about the, some of the questions that I had about that. Were there any major changes made to it, other than the typos and the rearranging and things? So it is as it was presented to us last month. Thank you, Ms. Height.
I have a question.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, sir, thank you, Miss Chairperson. Mrs. Height, I believe that we were gonna, there were gonna be some changes in that policy. I know I had brought up several concerns about the cell phones and one other, I can't remember exactly what it was, and there were gonna be some revisions done. You were gonna go back and check with your predecessors, I guess, who?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, School Board members, we did meet today as a follow-up. I met with the Administration and one of the things that you had asked me to check into was about in-school suspension and whether or not that could be done in after-school hours as opposed to during the school day, on which we have it. And after some discussion today, we asked that we could leave it the way it is at this point and look at, for something to do maybe in the future because it does involve staffing. And right now, our current staff is in place, you know, to fulfill the duties that we have now and not any extra duties outside of contractual time. So that would be something that we would like to investigate in the future. That was one thing. Cell phone was discussed again today at length with our building administrators and and the expectation would be that that is discussed thoroughly with their staff in their opening meetings and then relayed to the student population the first day of school.
So the policy is that the students will be allowed to have their phones in the building?
Yes, they will bring them in the building. They will not be visible and they will only be used at the discretion of the teacher.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I've had a little discussion, I believe, Mrs. Garner as well, with some of the IT. And it's my understanding that we have enough technology in the schools as it is right now that we wouldn't need to house our cell phones inside the school buildings for deterrent for our students.
And we do have a lot of technology. We don't have a one-to-one initiative, you know, for every single student, you know, in the school division. But our students travel a lot after school and to say that they can't have it in the building, you know, they come on school buses to school, they have to, they would have to keep it somewhere. They would have to have it, you know, on their body or in their locker or somewhere. So to keep them out of the building was not something that we said that we could mandate at this time.
I guess my only concern is everything that's going on in society today. You don't have to turn on the news but for maybe 10 seconds to see the gentleman that escaped from the courtroom through a telephone conversation or a command that he coughed into the phone and that was a signal for him to escape. Again, I just, with the technology we have in our schools, I just, you know,
Right.
I just have a concern that that's gonna be, continue to be an issue. And again, I'm hoping that, you know, as we move forward, that we hold our administrators to a high standard and that they not only follow procedure, but the students as well. They have to be the ones to set the example.
Yes, sir. And we discussed that today with the administrators today. We had a follow-up meeting after some professional development. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think the other thing was, I think that was it, in-school suspension, the cell phones.
My concern with the cellphone is that a student in Ms. Rogers' class can use his. They get to my class, I don't want to see them. Well, Ms. Rogers has to, and what I'd like to see that if the teachers were going to use them in their classroom for instruction, that it be included in their lesson plan, that they would be using them this particular day.
Right. And as you and I talked about, you know, if they are using it for an instructional reason, you know, and part of their lesson plan says, you know, in technology, and I told you the example of cahoots. If they're using technology and they list in their lesson plan they're using cahoots, then I would know that they're using a telephone. So the building level administrator that's reviewing that lesson plan would then note that that's a time to use that appropriately. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Ms. Height. Mr. Honeycutt? Thank you for your discussion. Ms. Garner, thank you for yours as well. Is there any other discussion for more members with that? If not, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Upstaying.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Item L, that the School Board approves the Superintendent's recommendation not to move the Air Force ROTC program. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Edwards. Do we have a second? Sack for Ms. Garner. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Item M, student liaison program. That the School Board approves the Superintendent's recommendation regarding the student liaison program. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for Mr. Edwards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Garner. Roll call. We have a discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is a motion to keep or deny?
Mr. Superintendent, would you like to give your recommendation again?
The motion is to change the School Board policy that we currently have that keeps the student liaison so that we would not have them next year for budgetary reasons and we could reconsider it in the future as the budget becomes.
Is next year 1617 or 1718?
Next year is 1617.
Okay, so that's actually this year.
Yes. Excuse me.
Can I?
Yes, Mr. Nichols, once again, give us your recommendation. Is it to continue or?
The recommendation is that for budgetary reasons at this point, with such a tight budget for school travel and things of that nature, that we discontinue the use of the
Student Liaison.
Liaison for 2016, 2017 and beyond.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bailey?
Yes. I see the value of student input into decisions that we make on the School Board. And I would not want to exclude students' wishes or opinions or recommendations. And I would recommend that in lieu, if we happen to approve your recommendation, that as Superintendent, that you could ask for student input on a building level and have conversations with principals and maybe they could have, we do have student government associations within our high schools.
That's correct.
And that would be another avenue and a way to solicit student input and to some of the important things that concern them and concern curriculum and those types of things. So is that something that?
Absolutely. I mentioned as we were discussing it that that would be something we would want to do is to get out and continue to get into the schools, engage the students and have obviously the times when they come and make presentations about items that are going on, awards and things of that nature.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If none, roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
No.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Madam Clerk, what is the count on that?
Six-three.
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 Okay. Item L, the agenda preparation. August 1 through 5, Flex Teacher Work Day, New Teacher Week. August 8th, Convocation. August 9 through the 11th, Teacher Work Day.
You missed surplus items.
Going back to item N, surplus items. That the School Board approves the additional surplus items. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Edwards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Sack for Mr. Honeycutt. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes. Item 11A, reminders in the listings for the month of August. August 1 through 5, Flex Teacher Work Day, New Teacher Week. August 8th, Convocation. August 9 through the 11th, Teacher Work Day. August 11th, Open House Fee Day, 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. August 12th, Professional Development Day, Regular Finance Committee Meeting. August 15th, First Day of School, Regular School Board Meeting. At this point, we're into item 12A, Board Member Remarks. Ms. Bailey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't believe that I forgot this when we were here last month. But I did because June was a whirlwind and, but I just can't, and I even have a T-shirt to prove it. But I want to just congratulate the Parkview High School Girl Softball Team for their successful season. They traveled to Liberty University and played on that gorgeous, brand-new softball complex they have there in the VHSL 3A State Tournament. They were one of the four best teams in the state. And I have a T-shirt that proves it. And just to prove that we're so special, on the back, they list all the schools that are participating and they list the rosters and they actually put Parkview High School on there twice. So, but they weren't in it. They had our girls listed twice, so, you know, we just got double billing there. Numbered, and my second thing was, the CyberCamp festivities were awesome and I'm just, the teachers were excited, the students were thrilled and I got home and started telling my rising eighth grader about the drone we had, that we saw. And she said, you had a, what's the name of it? Phantom 4, she thought. Anyway, she was so just thrilled that we had a fan, we had two Phantom 3s in the, in the school division. She's like, Mom, that's got a 4K camera. I'm like, okay. So anyway, it's something that they're familiar with and they are looking forward to using them. And that's one of the other benefits to our system is now we have all these things that we can reuse and play with and introduce to the regular classroom and not just CyberCamp. And I guess, the countdown is on. We are less than a month away from school opening. And so if your children have not been reading, it is boot camp time. It is time to whip them back in. So there's no better way to end your summer vacation than with a good book. And the last one I would like to mention is that we, some of the Board members went to Education Conference today in Richmond sponsored by Virginia School Board Association. And I'd love for our Board to schedule maybe a work session where we could share some of the information that we talked about today. And I think there very well could be some initiatives there that we might want to start here in this county. So if we could talk about setting up a time when we could discuss those things. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Mr. Ritchie?
I have no comments.
Mr. Johnson?
No comments.
Ms. Garner?
I would also like to say I went to CyberCamp and it was fantastic. The drone, also the little robots that they did and they had a competition and they're all studying to make sure this little robot got around this course. It was just fascinating to watch the kids and how they interacted with each other from different schools. different schools, but yet they were all one team when it came to working and demonstrating. So it was fantastic.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, I also wanna say that it was great to be in Richmond today amongst all of the other educators in the state of Virginia at the Virginia School Board Association. It was great to hear Governor McAuliffe and see his wife make the presentation for the Food Service Award. Wanted to thank Crystal Crutchfield, past employee of Mecklenburg County Public Schools, for all of her hard work. Looking forward to working with our new food service director, and in that sense, I'd like to welcome all of the new folks that are here with us and be an advocate for you, and I know you'll do great things for Mecklenburg County Public Schools. Cyber camp, unfortunately, I was not able to attend to see the festivities, but I've heard from several of the students who participated, and Mr. Cypher, as they said, it was a fabulous week, and they learned a lot of neat things. And again, I think I sat in on a PD day or came in and watched the drone that had flown